Good evening, everybody. From Churchill County Public Works and Planning Meeting, I call this meeting to order at 6:00. Item number two, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to item number three, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, verification and posting of the agenda.
The agenda was posted on October 2nd between 8:30 and 5:00 at all the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with NRS and Churchill County Code.
Thank you, Diane. Moving on to item five, consideration of possible action, approval of the agenda as submitted or revised, may I get a motion?
Mr. Chair Vic, can sort of give you for the record, I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, Diane. Moving on to item six, verification and notification of all landowners in accordance with NRS and the Churchill County Consolidated Development Code.
All notifications required were made.
Thank you. Move on to item seven, consideration of a possible action, approval of the minutes of the meeting held on a September 10th, 2025, public hearing. May I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings moved that we approve the minutes of the meeting held on September 10th, 2025.
It has been moved and seconded, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, Diane. Item eight, old business, consideration of a possible action, review of a special use permit, SUP 1077, previously granted to Rylexa Properties for Sage Valley RV Park on October 11th, 2023. This property is located at 4800 Reno Highway, assessors parcel number 008-472-12. A condition of the approval requires an annual review until such time as the planning commission determines it is no longer necessary. Is there anybody here to speak on that behalf? Please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Do I turn the mic off?
Yeah, hit it to where it turns green. There you go.
I'm Joey Jennings, and I'm the general manager of this property. And what else was I supposed to state?
Name and address.
Oh, address, 4800 Reno Highway.
Thank you. All right, so has everything been coming along as, as planned?
It's quite a task. The water table's been one of our biggest battles because it's so shallow, and our dealings with NDEP have set us back as well, just the process in getting the septic tanks approved. At first, required a 6,000 gallon tank, which was going to be 32 feet long, and we submitted a request through Marty Ugaldi to split it up into two tanks. That process was eventually approved, and then we had to get a discharge permit for the water in the ground so we could set the tanks. Anyway, long story short, we just got approval on that about a week and a half ago, and the tanks are set, and they're approved to use through the state. So we're excited about that. Other things that we've accomplished since our last meeting was, we covered about 10,000 square feet of area in the southeast corner with green turf, which was one of the conditions to make it like a park-like setting. We did that, and it looks really good. We did have some, have some slow with the well that feeds the mobile home park above, the water that comes out of there after it's filtered. It was trickling into the soda lake ditch, so the state had us build a, an area where the ground is higher and native grass will grow. So that was a little bit of a setback, too, costly, but we're trucking along, we're doing it. We're actually finished with the west side, and we want to start the east side now. So we'll need an extension if that's what is asked, please.
All right, Dean, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, Joey kind of summarized it. The west side's pretty much done. He was talking about moving all the units that are on the east side over to the new west side, and he'll start construction of the, the second half soon. A lot of the conditions of approval related to spacing for the RVs, and those are being met for the part that's completed, and he'll finish that for the new part. And then there's some final conditions of approval that can't really be wrapped up until the end, so.
Thank you, Dean. So it looks like we're coming along, or we've come a long ways from where we started. I know that, on widening other spaces and all the other.
Yeah, I hated the process at first, but the end results, I mean, it looks so good. So I, yeah, I disliked the process to begin with, but when you see the end result, it's nice.
Yeah, so, and I think, I don't know, and I'll open it up to the rest of the board here shortly, but in my opinion, I mean, I think maybe the board would need to maybe review this application where we still have quite a few steps where we're, you know, to get the other side done, you know, and not, but I'll leave that up to everybody else to see what they think.
Okay.
And with that, I'll open it up to the board. All right.
Mr. Chair Joe Frey for the record, I guess my question would be to Dean, do you see it necessary to review the special use permit again in another year?
Yeah, I mean, I think the second half will go faster, but I suspect you'll be done, and then we can check off any final conditions.
Yeah.
In the next year, maybe.
Yeah, I feel that same way as well.
All right, if nobody has anything to add, is there a motion and what we would like to do as the board? Is there any public comment? Nope.
Mr. Chair Joe Frey for the record, if you're ready to entertain a motion. I move to review this application in one year.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You've been approved for another year, so we will see you in a year.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item B, old business, consideration of a possible action, review of a special use permit, SUP 1102, previously granted to Ted Kristoff of Monarch Milk on October 9th, 2024. The property is located at 4624 Cox Road, assessors parcel number 008-123-17. A condition of approval requires an annual review until such time as the planning commission determines such review is no longer necessary. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of that? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Ted Kristoff, 4624 Cox Road.
Thank you. And can you currently update us on kind of where you're at with the project, Ted?
Yes, so part of the project, getting sewer approved, water approved, those processes are complete with the state. Our biggest holdup at the moment is getting everybody on board with USDA, FDA, and NDA on meeting all of our PMO standards for the plant itself. It's definitely taking longer than I would like in a much more in-depth process than I kind of figured when I first started this. But interestingly enough, they seem to be more up to date with bigger plant projects than smaller plant, plant projects. And so, for example, the people that would be building our plant would be coming from Israel, and so they have a lot of questions very specifically about different valves, different piping, does this all meet their PMO standards, is this going to be acceptable? That type of situation is quite a bit of back and forth. I do have a meeting with them again in October 21st to hopefully get things kind of pretty well finalized, and I didn't want to pull any plans and start anything until everybody there was happy with what we're doing.
Thank you, Ted. Is there anything you'd like to add, Dean?
I guess I'd just like to clarify with Ted that it sounds like you might be able to get going pretty soon, maybe, get the construction going this year.
That's what I would like to do, yes, as soon as they're, everybody's happy. They've had me move some interior walls and things like that, and separation in our plans. I would like all of that, everybody's happy before we go and do anything. Once that's done, I don't see that it would take long to get the ball rolling.
And then how long do you, would you estimate the project would take once you kind of got it rolling, do you think, Ted?
I would say four to five months, once the first ounce of dirt is moved. And then I would like, I guess, a question of clarification, if, if you're open to that. So to meet the SUP, I don't have to be processing milk and selling it, I just have to meet all of these other conditions, is that correct? Okay, because the process to get that done, once I have the plant up and going, is going to take a while. I have to run water, I have to run milk that I can't sell, there's quite a bit of in-depth there to be able to get that to where I can legally sell.
Thank you, Ted. And I think based on that, yeah, with the SUP, it's more like on the building and all that stuff, it had nothing to do with that. So with that being said, I'll open up the board if they have any questions or concerns.
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings for the record, it just, at this point right now, it seems like that we're still just starting to get our feet wet on the building side of this, and I just see the way, no reason to check in on another year, just find out where we're at at the end of the year, and kind of in agreement with that then, Ted? Yep.
Yeah, no, that sounds good, sounds good to me, yeah.
Anything else? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair Vic, can sort of give you for the record, I move to extend this application for one year, and to, sorry, to review this application in one year.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item nine, new business, consideration of possible action, a tentative subdivision map application, PC 25-8, filed by Casey Road LLC for Sand Creek subdivision. The property is located at 2685 Casey Road, assessors parcel number 008-792-95 and 008-792-11, consisting of 47.37 acres in the R1 zoning district. The applicant proposes to create about 180 lots. Is there anybody here to present on this? Please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Moon, Lubbockson Associates, 275 West Williams Avenue. To give a, the high overview on this, this was a subdivision that had been brought forth to the county, gosh, almost 20 years ago, very similar to this layout. It's R1 zoning, it's single-family residential. There's a lot of uniqueness about this, the county has water lines, has sewer force mains, has a lot of their facilities running through the street corridors of this subdivision. It was incoordinated with that original version that came forward. The developer had went one direction with, I think maybe you guys remember, a very high-density multifamily 600-some-odd lots, and we kind of maybe got our wits about us and kind of backed it back down to looking to develop in accordance on how it's zoned. It's an R1's property, looking to zone it down, R1 lots, single-family residential. Some challenges with the, the road widths, originally the county had a 50-foot road width right away, now we're 60s, and so we're trying to still fit that within the confines of this, this two properties here, so. Pretty straightforward, single-family residential, 180 lots, extending all cities, utilities, roads, everything necessary to have, you know, subdivision.
Thank you. And Dean, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, so as Steve was pointing out, this used to be the Old Stone Ranch Plan Unit Development, or PUD, was approved, but beginning in 2023, but it's been difficult to market and get on the, get rolling. So this application is reconfiguring the north unit of that PUD. The PUD had a north unit and a south unit, north and south of Birch Lane, so this will be the north unit. If the project's approved, half of the PUD will be changed dramatically, and the PUD will be voided. The applicant understands this and agrees to it. The remaining south unit of the PUD will be developed in the future as larger lots, similar to what's been going on with this. An important point about this project is that it's a tentative map, and that means it's a plan. It's not intended to be unchangeable or designed to construction detail, but they do need to show the basic layout, and the major elements need to be included, and conditions of approval need to be incorporated. So there's expected to be some shifting adjustments, minor changes, et cetera, allowed in the final design when the final map comes to the county. So this will be, this, this tentative map stage will be followed by the final subdivision map stage, and that is not going to be seen by the planning commission, FYI. And as a general rule, the standard is that the final map is substantially complies with the approved tentative map. So that's kind of how this fits into the project. This map will also be a merger and re-subdivision, which is kind of a technicality of NRS, but there's also going to be some easement-abandonments involved with the project, and those things can be done with the final map. I'd also like to note that the normal land division maps are not subject to noticing requirements to neighbors or newspaper. That was very different than the plan unit development, and there was a lot of neighborhood interest at that time. However, the state law does require submitting the map to a array of agencies, some have provided comments, and you should have those before you. That'd be Department of Wildlife, Division of Environmental Protection, and TCID, and there were no significant issues raised in those. So the staff report describes the project in detail, and as Steve indicated, they're going from close to 500 units on the north unit down to 180. The density for that shows up as 3.8 units per acre. There's also an increase of road sewer and water infrastructure that will be taken over by the county. This is because of the change to single-family, which relies on public infrastructure and the roads. You can see on the map there, it has a lot more roads than what the plan unit development had before. Of major importance was the phasing plan, which includes eight phases, and I think those are shown there. So east, sorry, west of, it's now Wildcat, if you are familiar with the PUD, it used to be Old Stone Ranch Parkway. It's gone back to the previous name of Wildcat Parkway. So west of Wildcat is five phases. On the fifth phase, it connects to Birch Lane on the south end, and the remaining phases are on the east side of Wildcat. That's important because it relates to some sequencing of off-site improvements that are described in the staff report. There are a few dimensional issues that are described in the staff report. One of them seems to be the result of a change in code since the last subdivision, sorry, with, since the original Sand Creek subdivision was approved. And so it, it's a width requirement, and so staff recommends that the project obtain a variance from that standard before the final map, and the director may also bring a code amendment to you as well. That's discussed in detail in the staff report. The PUD had a lot of concern about compatibility with the neighborhood, was a major point of contention, so the reduced density of the redesigned project will be almost identical to developments to the west and of similar character to developments to the east, and so that basically eliminates compatibility issues. There's adequate protections for health, safety, and welfare, there's adequate infrastructure to serve the project. There was some interest with the PUD, for example, regarding fire and school and other services, but with the redesigned development, those are no longer an issue. Regarding sewer and water, you can probably see the faint lines along the, well, actually, it's probably better on the air photo, but you can see it's adjacent to existing county sewer and water services, and as Steve mentioned, some of our services run through this project property already. The county's issued an intent-to-serv letter, which is an important step with the state, and the state NDP has approved of the project. That should be in one of the letters you have. The biggest subjects of discussion in the staff report were how the off-site road infrastructure improvements were handled, especially their timing. So on the north end, there is the connection to Casey Road, and so the, the traffic study submitted with the project included a number of update letters for different versions of the plan unit development, and then an update letter was provided with this project, and they were recommending an off-site turn lane on Casey Road to turn into the project. So staff's recommending that be done with Phase 1. There'll be, as you saw with the phasing plan, they'll be connecting to Birch Lane to the south in Phase 5, and so there'll be infrastructure improvements across the county's sewer lift station property and at the intersection on Birch Lane. And also, another item that came up is that the update letter for the traffic study also recommended improvements at Allen and Birch Lane, which you can see at the southeast corner of the air photo there. And so after discussions, the county will be collecting road fees for lots in this development, and the road supervisor has indicated he'll be using those to do improvements for that intersection, and also for Birch Lane to serve both the north and south development, when the south development comes into the office. One of the things that we do need to do, though, is make sure we have the property at the intersection of Birch and Allen so that those improvements can be, can take place, and so that is also a condition of approval that's recommended. And lastly, the maintenance of the large increase of road, urban road length was an issue for the PUD, and it continues to be with this project, and there's a recommended condition to allow an acceptable alternative to be figured out before the final map stage. And so with that, the staff recommends approval with conditions of approval, and, you know, I'd be happy to answer questions, and of course, Steve can answer questions, too.
Thank you, Dean. So as I understood that, so part of the conditions, right, were that that property that's at Birch and Allen will be, just straighten that out like it was planned, with the PUD still, only the county will be in charge of that?
Yeah, the idea is to straighten that intersection out and to improve the turning movements so that they don't obstruct traffic.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the traffic report going from what it was to what it is now, a lot of these improvements aren't really necessary from a traffic standpoint.
Correct.
But I think, you know, dealing with, with the developer and the, and the road supervisor, these things make sense, right? And so what we want to do is create a project that makes sense, and you don't have, somebody sitting out there on case trying to make a left-hand turn, and they get rear-ended, right? Want to give them a safe spot for them to turn left in there. So I think we're applying a little more common sense than we are engineering, and, you know, it makes a better product.
All right, thank you, Steve. And then you guys have read through all the conditions, right? Like, it's not three or four, so, and everybody's good with all those? Of all the conditions of approval? So, all right. With that, I'll open up to the rest of the board, thank you.
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings for the record, I have two quick questions, and I think I'm going to direct them more towards Dean and maybe, I don't know, direct her over here. What, how does a special assessment district work for the maintenance on this? How, how does that work?
It's something that would have to be set up, and it takes a lot of paperwork and studies, and so we don't know if that's what's actually going to be used. That was just an idea that was thrown out. It's one option that could happen, but there are other options as well, so that's not kind of above my pay grade about, you know, how we deal with the problem, but special assessment district is just one of them.
Well, and again, you know, the, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but the maintenance portion of this will come into play eventually, and I think that's something that, you know, that's why I was interested in what this was, because it looks like they're trying to, we would possibly deviate from the other ways that, that the funds are brought for the maintenance into that. My other question is, Randy, do you have something to add to that?
I was just going to say that, you know, again, we don't have that mechanism of an SAD, and it is an extensive process to do that, right? We did have discussions with the applicant about that, it was discussed, it was then put on the tentative map, and that's why we're having the discussion today, but we've also, we also don't know if that's the route we're going to go. Again, the price of improvements have gone up significantly, significantly over the last 20 years, and I think the road department's funds are about, have been about the same or they've been level for the last 20 years. So it's a thing that we need to look at and have a solution for, for the future, we just don't know if it's going to be for this project, but that, those are, those are things that need to be discussed within the county, and then, and then an agreement between the owner and, and the county prior to this being, final map being recorded, so.
Okay, appreciate that info.
Just to add that, we recognize the difficulties that maybe the road department's having with maintaining roads, and so that's why we brought forth the idea of, you know, you can go with a, you know, a homeowners association and keep the roads private and lead them to maintain, not always, not always warm and fuzzy with that, because is that still going to be around in some amount of time? So looking for a different mechanism that, you know, if, if you had a $10 a month per lot assessment, in 20, 30 years, that's like, that's like a half a million, right? So how do you go and come up with something that's maybe a little more, you know, a new way of thinking that we can still maintain the roads, keep them good, and not put an undue burden on, on, on the county?
And last question is, who, who actually owns Allen Road? Is that, is that county or is that state?
It's county.
It is county.
Well, that portion of it's county.
That portion of it is county.
And then I think the further north you get, then it's split between city and county, and then I, I think further south is to get to End Auditor, maybe, so.
Okay.
But that portion's county.
Well, I asked that question because I got a property on there, and I have no idea who owns it, so, anyway. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair Joe Frey for the record, my question kind of follows along those same lines, because number two, item D, talks about establishment of a financial arrangement for road maintenance, and item six talks about dedication of the roads to the county, and I guess when I read that, I felt like that was kind of contradictory, but I see how there's arrangements if we went with a special assessment district, or, Dean, I know you also talked about lot fees or maybe impact fees, is that, would those be one-time fees that go with the lot, each lot created in the beginning, or how would that arrangement work?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So when a subdivision happens, there's road fees, that's when the lots are created, not now. So it'd be like with final maps, and there'll be several with different phases, but we'll collect road fees at that time, it'll go into the, the road fund, and that can be used for improvement. It'll go into the, the road fund, and that can be used for improvements around the development, which is what the road supervisor was talking about for Birch.
And then to follow up on that, I mean, I'm also thinking about, if this is the instance for roads, do, does there need to be money for maintaining sewers and other utilities as well? Or is that something that the county has set up adequately that they can handle?
You got it, Dean. Well, maybe Randy is a better person to answer this, but basically, there's a fee structure built in the sewer and water systems, and, you know, how much of that gets applied to maintenance, I have no idea, but theoretically, that might be done.
Yeah, so essentially, we have, we have budget in there for repairs, remove and replace, and so on and so forth for the system, so.
Gotcha. So I guess with that said, I mean, it's still, obviously, this is just tentative, and do you feel comfortable that the financial arrangements can be worked out within the department?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I think what you're seeing on some of the notes there, you know, on a typical final map, the road right-of-ways are offered for acceptance to the county. The county exercises their right to, to accept those, right? That's, that's kind of a normal language. I think that's where that, that came from. I think, yeah, I think, I think we can work out the something that really makes this work. You know, you're talking a road system that is designed for 20 years. With proper maintenance, you probably get 30, right? If you can get into that situation. I think we need to, water and sewer, you're probably talking a much longer horizon as far as, you know, PVC in-ground is, you know, your manholes are probably the most vulnerable part of your, you know, sewer infrastructure, and, and water lines are going to last. And there, I mean, there's, there's iron pipe and transite pipe running all over the city foul, and we even dig up some redwood pipe every now and then. That's, that's actually in pretty good shape. And not that it's carrying water, but, so, yeah, I think the way the, the utility system is set up, yeah, they are planning for, there's planned obsolescence, but it's maybe in a 40- or 50-year horizon. Roads are probably in that 20-year horizon, and so we're looking to be able to extend those out so you're not getting hit sooner than later, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Is there any public comment? I was going to tell you, Ken, this might be the first time you got through with no public comment, but you had to go ahead and comment.
I'm the owner.
I know, yeah, go ahead. State your name and address for the record.
Okay. Kim McCrory, 2405 Farm District Road, Fernley. So we have to, we actually have people looking at the property, okay? Wahoo. They like Fallon, they like the property, they like this plan, but they do not want to maintain the county's roads. I mean, none of them. There's three of them, and all three of them are like, why? That the counties are supposed to maintain their own roads, you know, that's, and, and to put something in there that's dangling right now, and there's something dangling right now, it is not going to go over well. So I would just assume it was clean, and the county maintained the roads, and in the future, figure something out, you know? But if you throw that in the middle of this right now, it's going to make it weird for us with, and they're, two of them are national people, and one of them's just a legitimate developer, and they're like, no. So that's, Steve's probably going to slap me in the back of the head, but when we did the PUD, we didn't know what we were doing, and we took on all of those conditions that, and then the people looked at, and they're like, it ain't going to work. I would just assume tonight, kind of go up against that and get a good, clean, a good, clean, whatever you're going to do, vote on it, and, and just the county maintains the roads. That's, that's what I would ask for.
Mr. Chair, I'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Again, you guys are recommending it to the Board of County Commissioners. You can put that recommendation in there. You guys aren't making the decision. So again, that's, we're not making the decision tonight that it's an SAD or that we're taking the roads. This does go to the board, but I think if, in Kim's asking is that if that's what you want to recommend, then we would change that in the conditions.
Yeah, so I, well, I'll go ahead and take this here. Yeah, to follow up on, like Randy said, we're just making the recommendation to go to the Board of County Commissioners. They will make the final call if they want to do the assessment tax or do away with it, or maybe they want to increase tax. I mean, that's up to them. You know, we are just making the recommendation to go up to the Board of County Commissioners tonight.
And Jeff Goings for the record, just to follow up on that, the only, there was, I wasn't going to try to push that in as a recommendation. It was part of our
Yes.
writings here.
Yes.
And I was curious about what a special assessment district was, because I've never, I've heard of them, but I don't know how they work, I don't know anything, and it was in this, it was in this, you know, literature that we had here tonight to read. So, you know, I, that's not where we need to go at this point. I was just curious, and just a more of a point of interest, what, how that would work or potentially work.
Very good. But, but when these companies, they, they, they look at these things, they just fill in the blanks. And if that blank can't be filled in, then they can't fill that blank in. So that would, just a consideration. Appreciate it very much.
Mr. Chair, Joe Frey for the record. If I may ask, Mr. McCrory, would, would it clarify things if we possibly even at this point got rid of some of the things like special assessment district, homeowner association, and just left it with an alternative? Or you're, you're looking for something that your investors can come to the table and go, we know what our costs are, we know we can move this project forward, instead of something that, okay, we made a little progress, and now we're going to talk more about it a month from now? That's what you're looking for, kind of?
You know, I just, we, we just were told specifically that if, in fact, that SAD was in there, if the county didn't maintain the roads, it's like, you know, nobody wants a homeowner's association. We don't, and they don't.
So, again, it was, it was on the tentative map when it was submitted. It was a discussion that, that we had as, as a group with the county and, and the applicant and the engineer. Nothing was ever decided. I think Steve just put it on there, because, again, we discussed it. We've made it general in nature that something needs to be put into place at the time of final map recordation, right? So, again, today, we don't know what that is. And, and I just, that, that's just where we sit today. We just don't know what that is. And it could be absolutely nothing. It could be, we're going to accept the roads, we're going to maintain the roads, and, and we're going to move on. But we need to, as a county, need to look into the future and see how we're going to be maintaining roads with the minimum num, with the minimum dollars that come into the county for road maintenance, right? I'm not sure how many miles of roads Gary has, but it's a lot, and when he gets however much dollars to maintain that many roads, it's not, so it's, it's a mechanism for us to look into the future. We just don't know if it's at this time of this map, hence why we said we kept that, that condition general in nature.
And I think, I mean, our discussions were that between now and before we get agendized on county commissioners, that we would work that out.
Okay.
So you have something clear to tell your potential buyers. You know, in, in the big picture, 180, let's call 360 cars driving out of this neighborhood, going to the gas station, filling up, generating some gas tests, actually, someone, it's actually more of a revenue generator for the road system than if it, well, than what it is now. Right now, it's big, it's big flat zero. And so I'm not saying that it absolutely pays for itself, but it definitely works its way towards that in the mechanism in which the road department gains, you know, their funds for maintaining not just the roads in here, but the, you know, the whole road network system. So I think we need to sit down and talk about what, what is, what is doable? What is even legal? We don't know that even for sure. It's probably not truly an SAD, because an SAD is probably a bond-backed type of funding mechanism. It's probably more of a, a road maintenance district. If we could dream up of that thing, that, and again, my, my perception of this, it is, it is something that is, the county maintains the roads. That, that's where I want to get to. I do not want, I do not want an HOA. I don't think we want residents maintaining roads, that the county has water lines and sewer lines running through. That just doesn't make a lot of sense. And if there is, if there's some mechanism that just softens the blow, like I said, $10 a month, 180 homes for 30 years, probably about a half a million dollars, that gets you very close to what you need to maintain this road network for that timeframe. And so that's where I would come with that. So I think we work hard in the next few weeks, and we get something on the books that we can all work with, that Kim can sell to a buyer, and the county can live with for
And we might be the developer ourselves, because if somebody doesn't step forward, we're going to go ahead and have these guys do Phase 1 final map for us, and if somebody isn't there, we'll probably develop it ourselves, you know? And, and, you know, and in the big picture with the county, we, you know, we do have to pay the water and sewer connection fees, we have to building permits. I mean, every, it just, it just starts adding up where it isn't, it's way better than that 617-unit monster that we, thank God we didn't do, you know? I think this will work better for the neighborhood and the county and everybody. Anyhow, just, that's my two cents, three cents.
Buck twenty-five.
Thank you.
And as I'm reading through these conditions that are in here, I'm not seeing that anywhere written in, in these recommendation, recommended conditions, am I? No, that we were just talking about. I'm sorry I even brought it up, quite honestly. It was more for informational purposes for myself, and now I feel like I've kind of led us down a path that, yeah, we're not, that we were never looking at in the first place.
It's the time to bring it up, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, that's true.
I think it's a great, it's a great question.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. All right, thank you, guys. Moving forward here, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, Joe Frey for the record. Based on the information provided in the application and the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in CCC 16.04.040C and CCC 16.04.050A have been met and therefore recommend the Board of County Commissioners approve, approve the Sand Creek Number 2 tentative subdivision map application submitted by Casey Road LLC to divide APN 008-792-11 and 008-792-95 into 180 lots. This approval is subject to the conditions as listed in the staff report with the amendment that Item D be amended to cross out road maintenance in the first sentence, and just read that there will be a financial arrangement for the county to maintain the roads, and striking the last sentence of Item D. And then B, void the previous approved Old Stone Ranch planned unit development.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously, and thank you, guys. So with every zone change map ordinance amendment and PUD application, as always forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Thank you, guys. Moving on to Item B under new business, consideration of possible action, a parcel map application, PC 25-9 filed by Jim Minasini Petroleum LLC. The property is located at 7925 Reno Highway, assessors parcel number 007-271-43 and 007-271-56. The applicant proposes a revision to the acreage map to merge the lots. Is there anybody here to speak on that behalf? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, David Crook, Loomis and Associates, 275 West Williams. Basically, this is just a simple reversion to acreage, removing one lot line to take two lots and just create one, so.
All right, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to add, Dean? Or, oh, Amos?
Yeah, Amos Akenna, Public Works Planning and Building. As David has mentioned, it's, it's just removing one lot that is right at the center of Parcel Parcel 2 and 3B, as you can see, are the property to the right, and merging them to form, to create one lot. So sometimes reverting a map may involve abandonment of easement, and in this case, that 10-foot public utilities meant right at the middle of property will remain, so they're not removing anything, they're not changing anything. And it's important that we, we note that the county has very little discretion to deny or require changes to reversion to acreage. And staff reviewed the request by the criteria approved, and generally, no issue was raised, and the lot merger will not change any existing condition, neither does it create any future problem. Simply with that, we recommend that you approve the request with the conditions as provided in the staff report. And thank you.
Thank you, Amos. All right. So we're just making the lot a little bigger now, so, all right, thank you, guys. I'm good with everything. I'll open it up to the board if there's anything. Seeing none, is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, Vic and Sodegi for the record. Based on the information provided in the application, in the staff report, and heard tonight, I move that the findings have been met for conformance with the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.04.040C and Churchill County Code 16.04.050A, and therefore approve the application for a reversion to acreage, PC 25-Tech-09 for Jim Minasini LLC to merge APN 007-271-43 and -56 located at 7925 Reno Highway and Reno Highway, APN 007-271-56. This approval is subject to the conditions as listed in the staff report.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say, hold on one second, Randy?
Dean, does this have to get sent to the board?
Yes, thank you. Was that part of the motion to recommend to the board?
Sorry about that.
I would just add that we're going to recommend it.
Vic and Sodegi for the record. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend this change of map to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. And so with any zone change map ordinance amendment or PUD application, always forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval. All right, moving on to Item 10, code changes.
Sir, thank you. As you guys know, we've been working for the last six months to do the industrial code changes. Those did get approved last month. Everything has been put into place, as far as I'm aware. We did find that, I think we have three parcels that, that had dual designations, and those got missed in the agenda, so those will be coming back to you guys. Should be a relatively quick update, and then we'll have to get that to the board just so we're following protocol. So with that, we're, you know, going to kind of, from here on out, we're going to pick some items that are really hiccups for us in code and, and cause us problems, and every quarter, we're going to be coming to the board with, with minor changes to codes to help us resolve certain issues that, that happen, not on a daily basis, but as applications come in, just for clarification in that code. So, so keep your eyes open for that.
Thank you, Randy. Moving on to Item 11, the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings for the record. I move to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. All right, moving on to Item 12. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, Item 13, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.